And I want to ask the clerk, please go.
Bartlett.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Popkin. Bud. Odenel.
Here.
Aaron Scott.
Here.
Bill Scott.
Here.
Womple. Formowski.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
There is it?
Here.
Good to be here.
Great. First of all, one item that's not on the mayor's report. Mr. Cosner, Jack is retiring effective May the 4th. So, we chatted last week and he turned in his letter and said it's just time. And he's been with the city for over thirty years. He saw the water plant through as we know and there's big shoes to fill. So, we'll be on the kind of the search vote. I think I'm going to try everything I can to hire within. We've got a good assistant in place and I haven't reached out to Mr. Herron yet to talk with him. But I believe he's interested and that would be natural. Rick's worked for the city for over thirteen, fourteen years. So, then if he gets brought up, then again, the assistant would have to see what the qualifications are and if he's got what type of license and all that stuff. So, more to come on that, but Jack Cosner retiring. There's, I'll send this out to you, but I believe there's a going away lunch scheduled for him May the 1st at eleven thirty at the water plant. Eleven thirty lunch and cake at the water plant on May the 1st. But I'll send a flyer out to you.
With her permitting, they'll have it on the top of the tanks.
Okay. Yeah, you do. Well, it is. It's a big book, so.
Okay, city attorney's report.
Thank you. One item, discuss newly elected officials' oath of office. Our ordinance provides that the, all of the new elected officials take their office on the first Monday in May. That's the effective date. We have in the past worked around that. You'd have a special meeting that first Monday in May. Sometimes we wait till the second meeting, second Monday for the first meeting. The suggestion's been made that, and apparently there is no reason that we can't have the oath of office administered at the conclusion of our next meeting if that meets with your approval. In other words, at the conclusion of that next meeting, the very last item prior to adjournment, swearing in of all the newly elected officials. That way they're in office on May the first Monday in May. They can come to the meeting the second Monday in May, be off and running. So, any concerns or questions about that until the United ceremony? And bring me?
That's true.
That work okay?
And that will be set up forever. So, the last meeting in April, whenever there's newly elected, we'll do that every, every.
I've actually put the resolution together to say that they may be sworn in at that last meeting in April. So, if at some point something comes up where it's not feasible, then you can still be sworn in.
That would be the twenty second.
That would be the twenty second, yes. At the conclusion of the regular council meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dan. City clerk's report. Well, I just have a new contract for our copy machine that's in the clerk's office downstairs. And five years goes pretty fast. I did get four proposals this year and the winner, low bid, was Rico, our current holder. And actually, the lease went down, which is amazing, based on how many copies we go through a month. We go through seventy, about seventy-seven hundred copies a month. Used to be closer to ten thousand, so we're doing a lot better. But that's color and black and white. But three oh six ninety-two per month, based on the current usage. If we go over, obviously, they charge us a little bit more. That'll be for a new five-year contract from Rico.
I have to be broken record. I know we talked about this every time one of these copier agreements comes forward, how we're going to try to get all of City Hall and all departments on, you know, a similar contract so that we can all renew and negotiate at the one time to help leverage buying power. I know I followed up with Rex a couple of months ago and I know he was in discussions, I believe, with you, you know, somebody who had to do a give and take of a three-year versus a five-year. But eventually, it'd be great if we could make one contract for everyone.
GFI was one of the bidders and they were sixty dollars higher on their bid. So, GFI has got some copiers now in the, and we did talk with Panika. They were here looking at doing all of that. It would take probably somewhere six months to a year. They'd have people come in, they'd do the whole nine yards, looking at each department, figuring out who uses what, how much they use, and then they would draw up a plan. To be real honest with you, it's easier just to do it as you need it than to go through a whole big, because I don't know if there's any savings in going with all one, one unit.
Easier, easier for each department to have or easier?
For each department. For my, for my department, because I know what we need. If Rico wanted to come in and bid on some of the other ones, that's what they do. But yeah, it was looked at and we actually went out to all the other three parties too.
Right. Which is the end of the saying?
Yeah.
Committee reports this evening, planning and public works. Welcome back, Mr. Bill Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three items tonight. First item, discuss advertising for bids for resurfacing a parking lot in various street. Hand that to Wes.
Yep, we're going to redo some parking lots this year, which is an ongoing thing. We want to find the depot and down. The one in Muggsy in England or? And then a couple of streets that we did get down out to Plaza Project Sandy. Come from Plaza to College. And move start from College up to the Plaza in front of Tomlin's Place. Let me get down on Uptown Project. On down Sandy from Old Beecher to Anna. It's a rough section there in front of the Goddios. They tore that up when they done the fire, did the fire. We look piece Church Street. Coming down Beecher. And then West Street from Dallas to East Street, I'm sorry, East Street. From Dallas to Court. As soon as the engineers get up, planning, I think I do what state did.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Keep in mind, we'll also, as part of the leg of the East State Project, Downtown Project, the fourth phase, I think, yeah, phase four. We will redo hopefully the lot that is just west of Hamilton's. Across the street from Hamilton's and the streetscape from the, from state to somewhere.
Court.
Court. So, that'll be another parking lot that's used a lot, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I know it's probably been a year ago, there was some question about the space behind the depot. And are we looking at, are we going to try to correct some of that with some of the?
I looked, that was done just a couple of weeks ago. Me and Jim also talked about it. That probably needs, on another project, that probably needs concrete, rather than asphalt.
The area between the two buildings?
Yes, is that, you agree with that concrete building? We talked about, I mean, you have garbage trucks pulling in there. I would like to really abandon that.
We talked about that.
I didn't know we did.
It was talked about putting signage up.
Yep. But, yeah.
And they taught them the property owners.
I mean, we abandoned half of it. I mean, we had no use for that really, so. Now, we're back at another one sometime. And the same thing is going to have to be different projects.
Yeah, I agree.
It has to be concrete.
And I noticed that there's still parking behind the depot and that didn't determine it was a fire lane. I can't remember.
Well, that's what it is. That's what it originally was, but I think this stuff over there, you thought we would use that for a fire lane, which you don't.
No, it's too close to the building.
Yeah.
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 Just thinking long-term to make sure that we're addressing it for what makes sense, because by the time it circles back around in four years, or however long it takes you to circle through all the lot.
I had talked to that guy a few times, I forget his name. But, and now he does some concrete also already. Now, he's got the garage areas pulling in and out, so I don't know who's liable for that.
Is that something that we need to look into more?
Am I, is my memory correct, didn't we decide not to vacate that alley?
Correct.
Yes, and I don't remember the entire discussion, but the second reading, whatever it was, it sounds like it's tied not to vacate.
And I think it was because of the garage not being owned by the same property owner as the depot. Is that correct?
The, that's owned by Danny. It's really on the other side.
Right, that's owned by Danny King, right?
It was more tending to the corner building, not knowing what's going to happen with it. At some point, there may, maybe some ties there.
We talked about, yeah, we talked about maybe doing some parallel parking along that building as well. So, I just want to make sure that we're thinking big picture. It's going to be four years down and who, does that fall under planning and public works? Or is that something we want to revisit to make sure that it's resolved?
I know that area next to the building, this is what I call the old bell area. That pavement is fairly good condition. It's not, it's not really been used.
Just needs cleaned up.
It just needs cleaned up, really. I mean, it's.
Pebbles and stuff on top of that stuff.
Broken mirror bottles.
Yeah.
Is that something that the street department takes care of then? Something to super up?
There used to be a couple of trees along there, they kind of had the trees.
Used to be trees on there, hand moved boxes, yeah.
Doesn't anyone remember why it came to council initially regarding it? Does it vacate, vacate?
It was one of the, one of the, one of the cleaned up.
There you go. Basically, said if we're not cleaning it up, they vacate it. They would take care of it if the decision is not vacated. Any further questions? If not, we'll move on to number two. Thank you. Number two is discuss waiving bids and accepting proposals for a salt box spreader for the municipal service department. Wes?
Yeah, I've got four different prices. This is for a flat bid. It's a different type of spreader than we use. Most of them are truck and they go from, they range from seventy-five hundred to thirteen thousand. The one we'd like to have is ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And like I said, it's made out of stainless steel. This truck is mostly on Morton Avenue. Got other stuff, but that's main job is Morton Avenue. And the spreader box that's sitting there now is just, it's rusted, it's gone, it's led. So, we're lucky it made it the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's on your, the true budget, right?
And it's capital group, yeah, yeah.
Is that the state bid on that or is that just?
That's just, no, I don't even know if the state puts, I don't even think the state gets them kind of.
Speaking after last, stainless steel takes the salt so much better than steel.
Yeah, and another, another reason we're going off, this one was our free wet system will connect to this, this box here. So, we'll have to purchase that before we use our capital core, I've sprayed it, sprayed on the liquid.
Any questions on that? Not, we'll move on to number three. Number three is discuss waiving bids and accepting proposals for the purchase of a, more for the use of the City of Jacksonville cemeteries. Now, Jim's not here. It looks like me, he's wanting to waive bids and go from there, but I have no clue. I haven't talked to Jim.
Guys, I've tore off six thousand series board not to exceed, not to exceed sixty-six hundred dollars.
That's in the capital improvement too.
Okay. Any questions on that? Not, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Special study, Paul O'Leary.
Following our last meeting, Kristen Jameson and Bonnie Waters from JRDC are here. Jimmy Ty from Jacksonville Main Street, Lisa Musch from the Chamber of Comms are here. And just wanted to invite them in to say, or just give a presentation on what's going on in terms of economic development in the City of Jacksonville and if there's anything more we could do.
I'll start off, but we're definitely a unified team. And if you read the packet that's, or the information from JRDC that's in your packet, you'll see that our plan of work for the next five years through 2023 does definitely work with Chamber, Main Street, with Convention and Visitors Bureau, with the City of Jacksonville, and as well as our friends in Scott County to really work to improve as best we can our economy in this area. So, I won't read this packet to you, but we do have a mission, which is business attraction, business creation, business retention and expansion, and workforce development. And so, prior to me becoming a part of JRDC, there was a five-year plan that was adopted. And it's really been helpful for me in my new position to have a roadmap for how to move forward and work towards accomplishing these goals. The first goal is to improve the region's quality of place. And if you read the source last week, Marcy Patterson's been kind enough to allow me to address one of these goals each week. So, it won't just be toward, you know, only a small group of us that know what we're trying to achieve, but really the entire community. So, last week I addressed improving our quality of place. And that certainly, you can look at Chamber and Main Street and CBB and how we partner with them on a number of things, but as well as the local government, if you want to think about our infrastructure needs, needs downtown, as we were just talking about, recreational entertainment communities. I know Steve, you've talked about your work at the lake and different trails and things that you're working on, and that absolutely ties into that goal. Affordable housing, quality education, quality healthcare, high-speed broadband. Our second goal is creating an entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial ecosystem. So, this is one where, this is a goal that I think you're seeing a lot, happen a lot in communities, progressive communities, that have a lot of resources behind them and maybe within university systems, for instance, in terms of bringing together a business incubator, coworking space, maker space, those types of things. It would be wonderful for us to achieve that goal. It's just, it definitely will take a lot of folks working together to achieve that. You know, funding up a building to start with, programming, et cetera. A great goal, something that we'll definitely be working on in years to come. Goal number three, strengthening the region's workforce. This is, obviously, it's within our mission as well, but it's something that JRDC is working directly with Lisa in the chamber. And do you want to speak about where we are in our?
Sure. So, before Kristen came, Paul Ellis, during his tenure here, he and I attended the U.S. Chamber Foundation's Talent Pipeline Management Academy. Basically, it's a new approach to filling workforce in that you use more of a supply chain method of doing that. So, in discussions with a few, you select two or three employers in a particular group, put together a collaborative, and then you start to assess what their actual needs are. Then you kind of take a look at where those people that can fill those needs are coming from, where you can get them from, how you can get them, and then you work on a plan to do that. So, we have put together a small manufacturing collaborative as our first effort. We are working with Reynolds and Nestle and CCK right now to do that. Kristen and I are working on a plan that hopefully will, will foster some development of our local youth, to get them interested in manufacturing. You know, Votec needs to be cool again because we need people in those areas. And we think if we can start here, then we can grow that to plumbers, electricians, welders, fire, police, all of those types of jobs that we know we're going to be needing in our area. Because the hope is to keep a lot of our kids here in the area, not export our talent. So, we're working for these manufacturers to see what their needs might be. We've got, we're hoping to put together kind of a CEOs-type program with the seniors in the high school area. And we're just starting to work on our plans for that. I know there's some grants out there, we're hoping to be able to find that as well. So, that's kind of where we're beginning our efforts. Because we're both pretty small staffs and have other pieces of work to do, but this is something that feels important for the economic development of Jacksonville, to not export our talent, to keep it here and to fill the jobs that we actually have here. And part of that piece is just actually educating our parents as to what jobs are here. We have some really good paid jobs here with nice benefits. You know, our manufacturers are having a hard time filling those positions and keeping people coming to work every day. So, that's our hope, is to kind of work on that and keep people here. So, we're looking forward to that and that's what we're working on currently.
Didn't we used to, in the school district, didn't they have a program for work teams?
Lincoln Land, oh, the ACT program actually sponsored the workforce readiness certificates.
And that's not?
But it's offered through, I believe, Lincoln Land in Springfield, but we never could get it locally. It was part of the ACT original, there were three or four parts to it. They're not using ACT anymore, so it's just kind of fallen.
Well.
It was very costly for the companies too. So, you know, ACT ran the program, there's a cost to coming in and taking that test to prove that you have the skills necessary within those work fees. So, somebody had to pay for that test. Was it going, was it going to be that, you know, person looking for a job? Because it was over a hundred dollars or more to take that test. And it would encompass about four to five hours to take that test if you weren't taking it as a student with the ACT. So, who was going to pay for that? Were employers going to pay for that in the hopes that the person would meet the criteria they needed? Was someone actually going to take the time? And then the state decided they weren't going to use ACT anymore, they're contracts now with SAT. So, it's just a lot of stumbling blocks to making that program work. It had some, it had some merit for sure, but it just isn't going to fall into place.
Concern came with, even if we could sponsor paying for someone to take the test, then who owns those test results?
Yeah.
No.
So, even though the employer might pay for it, the employer really doesn't necessarily have the right to the scores.
I guess my dilemma is, is going to be, how are we going to keep talent in Jacksonville? I mean, where is the commitment? And I think that's with the, with some of the businesses I know from some time ago working with you, one of the biggest issues was education, not having that educated culture in Jacksonville to keep, have businesses come here, so.
Well, that's really, is a nationwide problem in going to that U.S. Chamber Foundation Academy. I sat with people from LA, New York, Wisconsin, Texas, Nebraska, Wisconsin, Ohio. The talent supply is low everywhere. Everybody's fighting the same battles. I've got a good friend who's working on the Foxconn project up in Wisconsin. They don't have enough people to fill all those positions. So, it's not just a skills gap, there is a people gap. Because I think also, I think we're at the lowest population for students graduating from college right now also. So, you know, you're just going to see that number get tougher and tougher. And then just making sure that our students have the right education to fit these jobs. A lot of our manufacturers, if you'll look at the job requirements, they want at least a year of experience. Where are they supposed to get it? So, you know, we're hoping with this program that we can at least take some baby steps to start to get our kids involved with what is available here in Jacksonville. And hopefully, we can keep them here and really develop some good talent.
We also want to try and change the perception of what manufacturing.
That's right.
Is. Because it's, it's not the same as it used to be. And it's very high-tech and we've got to reach them and get them thinking, hey, I could do this and it's not just that breaking lifting boxes off a conveyor. It's a lot more. And changing the mindset to, I know how to fix the machine, but why does it keep breaking? And how can I make it, fix it permanently?
Problem solving skills.
Lot.
And we've had great conversations with Lincoln Land and Superintendent Pathic in terms of how we can really work with our educational system to make this work, so.
We're pretty excited about it, actually. And so, we're, we're thinking that there's a good program already in place that if we can just figure out how to put all the pieces together, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, so.
Yeah, continuing on with our goals. That was number three, strengthening the region's workforce. Number four, helping existing businesses expand and grow. So, we, that is what we do a lot of in half our years, and Bonnie can speak a lot to that in terms of just being the resource. When people have questions about possible expansion, you know, increasing their square footage, et cetera, she's really the point of contact there has been for a lot of years in trying to, to make sure that people have the tools they need.
Especially our enterprise zone, as you, as you know, that is key to a lot of our local manufacturers when they, when they want to expand and want to build. Cost savings is always important, so not only the property tax abatement, but the sales tax abatement that they get. So, I really appreciate the support that you gave us on the application for the new zone and hopefully that'll keep, keep our local businesses growing and creating jobs.
Number five, develop available properties in the region. Strategies in, in the past have, have differed with this. I think now we realize how important digital marketing is. And so, that's really an area that I'm putting a lot of time and effort, working on redeveloping websites that has a lot of the search engine optimization tools behind it to make sure that we're, the people that are looking for us, we're also looking for them and we're, we're figuring out where those connections are. So, I have our, our piece from about three different economic development, development website groups and working to really find an entity that specializes in economic development work. Goal number six, constructively engage community-based organizations. That's where we talk about our team. All of us work together in trying to, to further the development in this area. And number seven, pursue development that diversifies the region's economy. So, we've heard a lot about that too, that manufacturing isn't the only thing that we've got here. So, we're aware of that and, and really trying to be forward-thinking and what other types of businesses would thrive in this area as we go forward.
Yeah, I think we could envision having collaboratives within healthcare, within ag. I mean, we're a huge ag industry here too. The Farm Bureau today just hosted an urban legislator from the Chicago area down. She was down, she's, she's new to Springfield and learning about our area and interested, which was fantastic because we could share some of our concerns and she could kind of explore a little bit about what's going on in different downstate as to her area. So, that was pretty great as well. So, you know, we're really fortunate that we are still a small community and have good relationships and are able to work together because we'll go to some of these conferences and find out that these other cities are not, they don't play well together in the sandbox. So, we're, we're able to do that really well. And I want to thank the city for its commitment to our infrastructure, especially the water plant, but the other projects, you guys are constantly looking at that and that's extremely important for economic development. If you don't have a good infrastructure, then we are not going to pull anybody here. You know, our town looks good and you continue to look for ways and we have, you know, a pretty healthy, healthy balance in the budget as well. So, you know, keep on, keep it on because that's extremely beneficial for our efforts as well. And that plays into a lot of things that are happening downtown because I work with small businesses more than the larger corporations. But small business is the backbone of the nation's economy, really. It's what's carried us through the recession and it's also what makes our town most unique. We have a lot of mom and pops, you know, small businesses that are only found here. And they're different than the small businesses that you're going to find if you go to Springfield or Quincy or any other town. So, working with them to keep them here to, we try to find out what they need and promote their business and help them with marketing.
and promote their business and help them with marketing. They face a host of other challenges in addition to all of the things that you've heard here. They face some different challenges. So we work very closely with them. And when they're ready to expand, we try to find them the next, the next step. So constantly working with businesses, trying to bring in new businesses. So as one grows up and moves into the next step, bigger space, we try to have another good compatible business come in to the space that they're leaving. So we've maintained downtown vacancy at five percent, thereabouts, for the last several years. We're constantly working with people to do property improvements so that they're ready to accept new businesses coming in and ready to go. The infrastructure that she mentioned, you know, that ties in with the fourth phase of the East State Street project. There's gonna be water lines affiliated with that project. And the property owners down that street are extremely excited about that prospect. Because that opens doors for not only the property owners, but the existing businesses that, then they can do more things and there's more options available when they have good infrastructure. So it does make our town more appealing and especially downtown more appealing for businesses looking to locate. Brittany's not here, but we all partner very closely with the CDB. Because in talking about development of placemaking, downtown is a destination. And we all work to promote our heritage tourism industry. Tourism is actually a pretty thriving part of our economy locally. And that spills over into the small businesses, the shops, all of the stores, the gas stations, the restaurants. There's an impact there. And so we want to all work together, whether it's branding and placemaking or all of these different components go together to make us an attractive community that people wanna come and live and work and play.
That was one of the questions I was gonna ask about bringing business in. Did we have, it's a good thing not to have open, open properties. But do we have open properties to bring business to?
We have several sites, we have several sites. And Terry, Terry Dennison was very proactive in getting the roadie site, which is now the Tri-County Industrial Site. So we have, and it's, we went through the pains of having it certified, so by Ameren. So it is actually shovel ready. They can come in, they know where, where everything is, the soil, moorings have been done. We actually spent the money then to have the Phase One environmental study then. So just haven't found the right person. We're constantly working on the AC Helco facility to try and find a solution to its current state. Still, still make it, doing our best to make it attractive to someone coming to town. And we're always on top of trying to keep the listings and things correct.
So I haven't noticed seeing a lot of open.
There's not a lot.
That's good, I mean, that's a good thing. That's what you know I was asking. But when you're bringing business in, you know, having something available for Tri-County is a good thing.
It is a good thing.
Which I don't know if we'll get another, no, I don't, this is not critical. I'm just talking about in general, people knowing that that's available, you know, in the, in the community.
It is on our Facebook page now, we actually made a video. We had a drone fly over and so we actually have a nice video that highlights where the water sewer, electric, everything, all the utilities are, how close it is to 72. So a lot of the positive things about that site are out there. We're working on, as the website develops, we'll have it out there as well.
I'd say y'all doing a good job.
Some of you might not know where that is. It's located between Reynolds to the east, between Reynolds and the prison. There's an 82 parcel acreage on the north side of the highway. If you're heading towards the prison, it's rail to the north, water and sewer. It's a very attractive site. Years ago, when we filled up the East Gate Industrial Park, you know, JREDC and this group and Tri-County and all of us, all of you played a big part in getting that property in the conglomeration of Tri-County. So that's a feather in our cap now. We just need to get that first in or persons to fill, or start to fill. Because we'd like to get that going. It took 20 years for the East Gate Industrial Site to fill. And I think once that one person starts it, then we can, we can go that direction. That's the start, that's kind of our strategy. We'd like for that one person to build it all on time. But if we need a piecemeal like we have with East Gate with five or six good, solid companies, that's, we'll do that too.
Of course, North folks, others, we'd really like to have some rail use over in there. So we're trying to find a good, good solution for that as well.
And speaking of East Gate, we're going to have an event, put under calendars, May 16. Kind of a, similar to a Tuber Business After Hours, but really to inform folks about all of the businesses that are at East Gate. So it'll be a tour at evening, about 20 minutes at each location and refreshments as well, so.
And that starts where, or is it start?
Well, I'm still working on figuring out the actual tour, the, the timing. But you'll get, you'll get an invitation.
Is it going down corridor 67?
So corridor 67, John Power was our chair of that board. So currently, we are talking to a gentleman to come in and be the new chair of the board. But as far as, the chamber office takes care of all of the treasurer duties for that organization. It's strong and we've got good investment from a lot of areas. We're hoping, we're working hard. Part of the hope is that we could get Beardstown instead of a two-lane bridge to be a four-lane bridge. There's push for that because who wants to build a four-lane highway into a two-lane bridge? But again, we're at the mercy of the state and their budget. The Jerseyville piece is working hard because they have a Project Panther going on down there. So they need some access. They need that New Delhi bypass completed in order to assist with their projects. So there's a push in that area. So those would be where corridor's efforts are currently in those two areas. We hope to have our next annual meeting up in McComb. Been, been moving around, but really got a lot of good investors who are still really committed to that project. And, you know, just hoping that we can continue to find some monies from state or if, you know, if the Fed comes through with their big infrastructure monies maybe that they've been talking about, maybe we'll be a piece of that as well.
Any other questions for anyone else or any ideas or anything?
Just, Kristen, it's, your thing's set up on a five-year plan. Are there any things in this first year that you guys are highlighting to kind of kick it off?
Yeah, so we, we've met with our executive board and really kind of pinpointed a few things that we need to work on this year within 2019. And workforce development, we talked about, is really the thing that we're hearing all the time from our manufacturers that are here.
And new business coming into, it's the number one criteria that new businesses are looking for if they're going to be moving into an area is, can you fulfill my workforce needs?
So we have to be, be able to say that we can do that, right? So that's, that's number one. We are an investor-based group, so within the JREDC specifically, it's, you know, retaining our investors and making sure that we are still a viable group. So I'll be working on that. And then I think it's important to increase the visibility of what we do. That's a part of why we're here. And as I said, Marcy Patterson is helping us to just let me put an article in the paper every week, in her paper every week, which is really helpful. But certainly the website project will be key. And, and things like East Gate, different types of awareness campaigns.
So another thing I asked was, is there anything more the city can do to help with economic development?
Well, I think as it stands now, the way our, our board is structured, you have three representatives on our board. So we really do have a lot of city, what am I trying to say? Input into everything that's happening within our board meetings. So I feel like we're, you are represented whether you don't realize it or not. But, but those folks are bringing what happens here at council and doing a job, good job of imparting the needs to us as we work together.
I guess one, one thing that surprised me, Kelly Howell, his title is community development. And I always thought that he, his position was to sort of be like the economic development person for the city. But he, as he pointed out last week, that's not something. So is that a discussion we all need to do? Like, do we need someone specifically on staff that do specifically stuff for Jacksonville? To try to do economic development for Jacksonville? Because right now, we kind of have the, JREDC is doing that for us. And they do lots of good things, they have lots of stuff in the region. And anything that happens anywhere in the region is good for Jacksonville. But do we need someone specifically on staff just to tackle that?
It sounds to me like Kelly undersold himself a little bit. Because I know if we have calls at the chamber about new business, it goes to JREDC and lots of times it goes to Kelly. Because they have the information about funding sources, the grant opportunities, Enterprise Zone, all of that. So that is a good, really, he's done a fantastic job of working with people who are coming in. These guys do a great job if, for all the bids that come in or the requests for information as well. So, you know, I, I think he undersold himself a little bit.
I agree. I think that, I know for downtown projects, Kelly's one of the first calls that I have people make. And whether that's to get information about tip or, you know, a building permit or zoning, you know, a variety of issues. And they, and they all direct back through them. You know, I can provide information about the tax credits that are now available to property owners because it's a historic district. I, you know, and I work with his, with his office to provide and supplement the information that they give interested parties. But it's really very much a team effort. I don't know that adding another position to the mix lessens what any of us would be doing in any way.
Steve, I think it's important to remember that JREDC actually started out as the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation. Came out of the chamber initially from a study and then they formed their own EDC. And along we were evolving that, more became evident in the regional approach to it. Traditionally, the mayor has been the city's representative, primary pusher on that. Primarily was Ron Tandy first and then the band. So if there's somebody else's need or not, I don't know. But keep in mind that this organization was the city's to begin with and then more into what we have now.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing or saying we're doing anything wrong.
No, no, I didn't take that one either.
From stuff I hear in town that, like, people are worried about the economy and it's like, are we doing everything we can? It's just a question.
And it may be like in many cases, just more of an issue of us making more noise, telling people what we're doing. And we try that as much as we can with various things JREDC does. But there could always be room for improvement. And I think what is going on with Source is a very good step in that direction.
I mean, and this is great. I mean, I think the challenge for us is for everyone in the city council is for us to be an extension of this into the community, to answer any questions or get people. If anyone, if anyone comes to you, just kind of bringing their hands, give them some information or to direct them to the resources we have.
And within our group too, I know Lisa gets people asking questions and she forwards them to me. I get people that are asking questions and I forward them to whoever they need to speak to. So we all work together well enough to know who to send people to. And not that we're trying to send people on a wild goose chase and we certainly hope that they don't feel that way. But we're able to better direct them to the people that they need to talk to. And that I don't think is going to change because no one of us can do all of these things.
And you mentioned your friend Paul Ellis. I read one of the things that he's doing is that he has a program for retirees, who aren't entrepreneurs. I don't know, maybe that's something we wanna get involved with. I saw in Utah, they have a specific program where they're saying, contact your kids that moved away and tell them all the great stuff that's going on. Because the community's done all sorts of investing in the school system, the school system's getting better. And I had a friend of ours came to town, he's from rural area of Quincy, and he was doing some work in Jacksonville. And he's like, is there any place I can't go in Jacksonville that's not safe? And I told him, it's like, you walk anywhere in Jacksonville, if a $20 bill in your hand, it's gonna be fine. So this is a really safe community that we can draw people to. And then like Kansas and I think Vermont are doing something where they're giving grants to people who have home-based businesses or if they work remotely. Just to have them bring a job into town that's a remotely based business.
Well, the Promise Foundation is also, you know, providing scholarships to try to keep people here, going to college here. Because studies have shown, a lot of people wanna stay where they've graduated from college. And so keeping our, our talent here, keeping our, our future, you know, decision makers here and interested. We're all involved with the Morgan Scott CEO Program. And that's another tool that we're hoping, you know, the first, the first phase of graduates are starting to come. And many of them are maintaining their connections to Jacksonville. And so a lot of them are now, they've all figured out they have to go get a master's. They have expressed the intention to come back here. And that program helped reinforce that desire. You know, so I think that we are trying a variety of different things collectively and independently. And there's a lot of things to try.
One thing, one thing in my opinion as a city that I think we could push toward was, I know it's been talked about a lot in the past, but instead of talking about how I could do it, is the west side of Warden now to the interstate. And Lisa brings up a good point, it's infrastructure, it's, you gotta be ready when somebody comes. We need to be ready. And we need to push that direction, whether it's four-lane and infrastructure. And I know it's money, but somewhere we gotta find a way to get that done.
That ties in the corridor 67 thing. And the last time we talked about city council was when Jenny Griner was here. And we were talking about doing some sort of sewer project, something like that to enable development. So yeah, that's something that we should be looking at.
I think, I think what I'm hearing, we need to kind of toot our own horns more. Because like, we, we've been talking about the fourth, you know, it, it is on the radar of a potential capital build. I dot knows that we want that out to the corridor, the four lanes hitting west. You know, could we take it a step early and get the sewer and things ready? If the four lanes don't occur for a while, yeah, we could probably do that. It's gonna cost some money. Other things like, that have been in the news lately, I don't, I may shame on me for probably not commenting on these. But, you know, you know, with the shop closed, for instance. You know, there was an online petition about getting Target. I wish it was that easy. We've been after Target for years. I didn't comment on it, but they said no. And they just said no a couple of weeks ago again. I've visited with Popeyes, who's the franchise owner in Springfield. He's not ready. Chipotle, I've visited. Now, those are retail, those are fast food retailers, but things are being done, okay? And maybe shame on me for not articulating them to you, but some things are confidential. They don't want, you know, there's reasons why these folks don't wanna come to Jacksonville. It's not because of what we're not doing, it's just we're not big enough or they're just not ready. So we're doing a lot behind the scenes. I know we work well together. We appreciate Steve for wanting to, and the city council. Every decision we make, in my eyes, is helping economic development. I mean, just looking at the list today, they're not big items, but we're helping. I mean, the road projects, let's talk about, we're making them more attractive. You know, they might not be the most visible streets, but guess what? They're a need and we've identified it and all of you are supporting it, so that, that helps out, so. We'll try to do a better job of getting the word out, know exactly what we're doing.
And the other thing too is that, you know, when you're a community investing in yourself, that's the kind of thing that businesses do take note of. It wasn't that many years ago that Bonnie can tell you, they used to avoid driving people downtown purposely. Because it wasn't a selling feature. Now it is a selling feature and they try to find excuses that, I know we're not going from point A to point B, doesn't really cut through downtown. But they'll take a detour and run them around the square just to, yeah, just make up an excuse. So we have to... So, we have taken, you know, a bad situation, turned it into a good situation and working collectively. All of these things are pieces to a much larger puzzle. And we're doing it, yeah, we can always do better, there's always more to do, there's always improvements to be made. We're open to suggestions, but like Andy said, you don't always want to go around and brag about all the people that told you no either.
Yeah, and I agree. Kelly did kind of sell himself short and I talked with him about that afterwards because, you know, he is instrumental in economic development. And we're the biggest investor that JREDC has, so they're the economic development person. I don't think we need to hire an economic development person because if you're really going to hire an economic development person, and we just went through this with Kristen, bringing her board with JREDC. They command upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, a hundred thousand dollars for a bid with the letters at the end of their name as economic, I think the team that we have here with Kristen and Bonnie and Lisa and Judy and Brittany and all of us, we're part of the economic development train. So, I think we need to keep moving forward and give it our best shot and be a little more articulate and visible. And if people have questions on what we're doing, send them, ask me, ask them and we'll try to answer them. It's a team effort. I mean, that's the only thing we're going to get done, how we're going to get it done.
Okay, Judy. I just would like to say this, is that I hear a lot of times people have questions about ideas. Tell them to bring it to the city council. That room is empty a hundred percent of the time, every time that we have a meeting over there. But, we always hear about people have ideas. Why don't they bring it to the city council? Because ideas can fall on the, will on a vine if a person doesn't come and tell somebody.
Or if you do tell somebody, every small business was an idea.
Yes, yes. So, instead of people just, I can't go to the city council, I can't, or it's always a secret of who has these ideas, tell them to come to, tell them to come to the city council. I mean, that's, they say that we're not, yeah, we're not transparent. Come to the city council and be transparent. I mean, I've listened to that so much, it's like, I'm tired of that. Bring your ideas here, newspapers, everybody, tell people to bring your ideas here. We'll listen.
I think we're very approachable.
Yes, I did that, you know?
No, great discussion. I think that's what Steve's intent was.
Amen, that was good.
Yeah. Any other questions for these folks or?
I really appreciate that the word got down. And I kind of put the bug in Kristen, thanking her for taking the job and saying that she has a really important one. We all have really important jobs for the community.
Thank you for having us.
Hopefully, we get you back maybe periodically.
That'd be great.
Actually, we kind of, you know, Brittany's not here, but I know May is Convention and Visitor Bureau Month and I think, or it's the month and I think Brittany's scheduled to come sometime and give an update on what she's doing. So, that's another. Any public comment at this time? Brandon?
Chattanooga Tennessee has done what is called municipal broadband with their community and they've increased the speed of the internet by tenfold from what normal providers can provide as well as lowering the cost for, I'm just throwing that out there.
Chattanooga?
Well, it's municipal broadband, there's a lot of communities that are going to, I mean, so the digital age was something that you were talking about. And if you're going to look at wanting businesses to come here, you might want to have everything they have before they get here, like you said.
Didn't they bring a high?
We had discussions as far as fiber, it's been five or six years ago.
Well, Metro's in the process of trying to bring more fiber optic as well. They did the school district and now they're trying to expand on that. They've been meeting with larger businesses right now, trying to get a, gauge the interest and the potential customer base. But, I mean, options are out there and that's definitely, you know, if we're going to do something, we need to look forward to what the next thing is, is that's coming.
I had a discussion on Facebook with some friends and a friend of mine lives in Kansas City and I think they have Google Fiber. And she was getting either, I think it was a gigabit of upload and download for seventy dollars a month. And maybe it was fifty dollars for a hundred megabytes, not per month, I'm sorry, like just like speed. Right now, I have cable and my speed is fifty and for about a third of the price, she's getting a hundred. So, it's something like, if we want to compete with having people come to town, we need to have really strong internet service. And right now, we're relying on private industry to do that. And there's only two main providers and so there's not very much competition. So, anything we do to get other competition in town will be really good. And that's one of the things coming up with the 5G system with the telephones is that might have a home-based alternative where you can get 5G over the air, you can get your internet. This might be an option going forward. So, we'll see how that develops.
I think Google didn't, they picked a few cities to launch those projects in and they paid for it, I think, right? Yeah, unfortunately, we weren't on that.
And the thing that Brandon was talking about, it was through Tennessee Valley Authority, municipal, where they brought you to town.
We love them.
Put a little binder there.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money, but it's investment and it's a payoff. The problem is the risk and if you want the government to take the risk, they're a private industry. And the problem for us is that if you can go in and you can put in service in Chicago or Springfield and make more money than you can in Jacksonville, Jacksonville's going to be the tail end of the priority list. So, maybe there might be, have to be something we can do to move us up on that list. And I think when we previously talked about municipal fiber and MediaCom came in, I think they pushed us up on the internet offering in town because we were talking about the municipal fiber. For personal experience, it's really expensive, but at least the option's there.
Okay.
But thanks for that comment.
We will adjourn if you want to.